...the second, 2011 at 5:45 PM is now called to order. Members present is Donald C. Whitman Clark, Charles McCann President, Charles Vance Commissioner, Thomas Ramey Junior Commissioner. I guess we are just picking up on the canvas to certify the special primary election that was held on May the 14th, 2011.
And do we have the paper?
Yes, there's certificates I need to read into the record.
Yes.
For Governor, the Republican, Bill Maloney, 170. Ralph William Clark, three. Larry V. Faircloth, three. Mark A. Sersosa, 28. Clark Barnes, eight. Cliff Ellis, four. Betty Ireland, 165. Mitch B. Carmichael, six. On the Democrat for Governor, Earl Ray Tomlin, 1,088. Jeff- Jeffrey V. Kessler, 10. John D. Perdue, 227. Rick Thompson, 410. Arnie Maltus, seven. Natalie E. Tennant, 127.
Having completed the canvass and tabulated the results that's just been read into the record, is there any discussion?
I'd just like to commend the County Clerk's Office on the way they handled the canvassing. I think that as being a part of the canvassing board, the last two or three elections, this was the smoothest canvass that I've been a part of and I appreciate everything the County Clerk has done with this stuff.
Anything better. I concur with that and of course I think our coworkers are doing better. Motion to certify the special primary election.
Second.
The motion is second. Been all yes vote to certify. Motion carries. Motion to adjourn this special session.
Motion is second.
The motion is second. We stand adjourned. That is it.
Would everyone please stand and say the pledge of allegiance. And ladies, if you all don't mind, we want for you all to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you ladies.
This session of the Lincoln County Commission on June the second, 2011 at 6:00 PM is now called to order. Members present is Donald C. Whitman Clark, Charles McCann President, Charles Vance Commissioner, Thomas Ramey Junior Commissioner.
Okay, having been early in the first item of business, we want to give you all respect and certainly want to express our sincere appreciation for being outstanding young ladies and really going down in history of starting our, a sports program in Lincoln High and being so successful. We just wanted to express our appreciation for that. So as I mentioned earlier, we have with the help of Lincoln Journal, Lincoln Publishing, made a certificate for each of you, put it in frame and we want to present that to you and it reads, "The Lincoln County Commission hereby recognizes the historic achievement of the Lincoln County High School Lady Panther softball team in winning the West Virginia AAA State Championship at Vienna on Thursday, May the 26th, 2011." The Commission congratulates you on your success and thank you for bringing honor and pride to your school, your community, and your county. First, Brooke May. Right here. Kelsey Browning.
Congratulations.
Let's go, Roger, please.
We're staying right there. There you go.
Amy Parsons. Amanda Salmons. That's at third baseman, I saw.
That's at third baseman.
She's working.
Working, that's what it sounds good.
Real world.
Play days are over. Morgan Hutchinson. She's known as the bunt specialist. Alyssa Cook.
She hit a homerun. How many did she get up there this time?
She just hit one up there. She's hit six this year.
Wonderful.
That's bein' her blood.
Yeah. Megan Runfield.
And you all are selling state, or let's show, now will it say Lady Panthers AAA or anything like that?
Yes, they're like Lady, 2011 state champions. And then on the basket, we have all the girls' signatures on it.
I know Mr. McCann and Thomas have said they wanted one, I also want one.
Yeah, I'll take them.
These girls are taking, they got order forms?
Well, we all want. They all want some, they're taking them. But you're selling them so that we can...
Kayla Jeffers. Brooke West. And she can do it all.
I like that you're the only hip saying she's our freshman or...
Yeah.
I like that.
Sarah Pennington. Casey Owens. Alex Lawson.
Can we tell the story about Alex here? She was chosen as the what Player of the Year?
She is the MSAC, the Mountain State Athletic Conference Player of the Year and the, it's been in existence for over 25 years. She is the first non-pitcher to ever receive that award. And she is also a candidate for the ESPN Gatorade Player of the Year.
Oh my goodness. That's wonderful. Now, is there any other girl in the audience that we haven't mentioned?
And now, the guys that help out, claim to be coaches and work on...
I like that.
I don't see here Craig Roberts. Mill Neller. Bo Parsons.
His daughter's behind him. Frank, you wanna get Bo?
Cynthia Lucas. Stay over y'all's side, we'll get it.
I think Cynthia has coached these girls, some of these girls, since they were little tiny things, haven't she?
Rod Hoover. Dwayne E. Step, the coach. Going to Domingo County, right?
Yes.
Keith Cook. I think he's... Emery Atkins. And last but not least, Tommy Berg.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you all and we're just so happy with you.
Thanks, sir.
And when somebody wants a picture on paper, it will just hold you in it.
Okay. Three, two, one. And one more. Three, two, one. Thank you.
All right, thanks again ladies. Have a good time.
I want to say some things. I'm a big member of the group. You've seen that. Yeah. On behalf of the softball team, we've signed, every player's signed this, coaches have signed it and we want to present this. This will be the first ball of Lincoln County High School State Championship ball. You all have supported this. I know I seen you two out in the sun all day long supporting us up there and we really appreciate it and I hope you had as much fun as I did because you're still real talk about it. But there's, there's the ball with everybody's signatures on it and we really appreciate what you guys has done for us.
I just hope that you shared the pictures I sent you with your...
Oh, I have. And so has everybody else. Everybody, I was on the news and everything. But we really appreciate what y'all done and our new field and stuff, that has brought this championship a lot. Tell you what I mean, it's made our girls play harder. There's never been a softball team that's come there and said, "Your field is unreal." I mean, everyone loves our field.
A lot of work though and you got...
A lot of work.
It's from a mud panty to a ball field.
That's exactly right. And we just want to thank you all for your support and coming up there and celebrating with us and it was, it was awesome time for me and Tommy. We're something we'll always talk about.
I would just like to say as a sports fan, basketball, baseball, and football, sometimes we support teams that really we, we look at, we watch the way they carry themselves and we're not as proud of the way they carry themselves as the way they play. And I can tell you after being in Vienna and watching these girls play, the way you conducted yourselves, you're a class act. And I, I don't know if you realize, but we didn't just win a state championship, what you did for this county and what you did for the young people coming up through the system was you gave them hope. You gave them hope that there's a chance. I, I think that for so long, this county has been beaten down and looked at it in a negative light across the state and what happened last week with all the state coverage of you being the class act that you are and winning the way you did and being the role models for the other people in this school system, especially the elementary kids. I appreciate that. And I know that being from Harps, I was always able to go watch Harps basketball games and you know, there's something about a crowd of fans. You look around and you see people that they don't have kids in the system, they don't have kids playing, they're just neighbors, community people. And at the softball games last week, when you looked around the sideline, you didn't see just your parents, you saw the county rally behind you because of what you've done. My hat's off to you. And I know that you can do it next year.
You're speaking of that, you know, these kids right here, they're very honored to coach. I mean, they got a real good work ethic, they work at it year-round. You know, and it's, it takes a lot of, you know, heart and dedication they put forth in it to get their state championship. And you're speaking of it, Keith and I today was at the high school for step-up day. All of our eighth graders coming to the high school. We got three weeks in the summertime where we're allowed, you know, where we coach them, get them for preparation for the next level. We had 25 eighth graders today sign up just to play softball.
Is that much? Last year, that probably would have been 12.
Right. So the interest, you know, of winning a state championship is going to increase the numbers dramatically and also, you know, that's going to be in preparation for us to be able to build for the future, you know? We need to get a younger team, sort of maybe a freshman team along with our JV team and our varsity team. That's, the depth of our teams is what gives us success at the high level of play.
I'll say their, their work ethic must be second to none because as I watched you guys, when we partnered and helped you develop the field, when I would go over and see you working, I worried, I thought, boy, they're gonna really push those girls before you guys ever stop working. And I guess that work ethic went over to your team, but congratulations.
Yeah, also in that, we did win the sportsmanship trophy for our fans of Lincoln County and our community was a big, big success when most generally at the state tournament, been in the past, if you win a state championship, second place is usually a consolation prize for the sportsmanship trophy. But I tell you, our fan base supported us tremendously and that's what brought home the sportsmanship trophy to Lincoln County as well.
And they, I had seen people at that ballgame that you don't normally see in a softball game, but they come out in sports. And like when we come home, I called one guy and asked for a couple of fire trucks and an ambulance, maybe a cop, to meet these girls at Dune Ball. And I'm telling you, when we come around that curve, there was 21 fire trucks lined up there and cops and ambulances. And I've told every fire, fire department guy that was there, when they first cranked, they got up on the fire truck coming through the ambulance, when they started cranking, every one of them sirens, every one of them was a crown.
Sure was.
It was, it was just an awesome...
Awesome feeling. Great for the community to come together like they know.
I mean, there was people standing on their porch, we don't even know how they knew it. We honestly don't know how they do it.
Basically.
They did take one, they took one. It reminded me of the Fourth July Parade, what it was. And it was just a real great time for me and them girls, we tried to show them the best time up there. Never once had to tell the first girl getting bed, like they was focused, they was ready to go play ball, they was ready to win. And we told you all last year, we was getting ready to go win a state championship, I remember I said that. And, and we let, let that slide by, but we come back this year.
Go, go, sir. Yes, we have.
And we're gonna do it again. I mean, we've got a fine chance of doing it again.
You've won a lot of hearts.
I personally want to thank you all, all you all, because like Thomas says, there's nothing better for this county than, than our, our kids and what they can accomplish. I will challenge you though, you won a state championship and I'd like you to go from using that to doing more things for this county and more things for yourself and more things for your grandmas and your grandpas because you all are our future. You're the ones that's gonna do it. You're the first ones to do this for that school over there, but I'm sure you won't be the last and I'm sure some of you will probably be involved in it next year. So, but I, I wanted to personally thank you all for not only winning the state championship, but making everyone in all this state know where we're at and what we, what we're about. And it's about good young women and men like you all. And thank you very much.
And I want to see the day that some of you won the college, but I want to see one or two of you come back and beat the girls softball.
Well, these kids right here, if you know that, most of them are gonna, they're gonna prepare self, prepare theirself for the future of the college level. We carry a 3.75 GPA on our girls softball team. So you know, we don't have to worry about checking grades, worry about academics, they handle themselves well in the books as well.
Like Judy said, while I go, I've coached a couple of these girls when they were seven and eight years old. It was a real honor to stand inside the fence and be well coached. I appreciate them and appreciate you all.
Yeah. Now, I don't know what else to say other than I remember up on the field that day that somebody mentioned, but I'll leave an open question. Let us know what else we can do for you.
Well, that being said, we're in the making of it. You know, the, the weather inhibits, prohibits us to play a lot of games at Lincoln County versus every other sports in other states, they play their, their sports in the fall. Softball's a, a fall sport for them. You know, they don't have the weather that prohibits that. You know, the spring sports in our area, we get a lot of rain. And you know, that being said, our next goal is we're looking to maybe try to get turf put on next year of the field to help us be able to get more games in for preparation to lead us back to Vienna again next year.
I thought you were gonna say a dome.
That would be nice. Wishful thinking, right?
But the turf, the turf makes rainouts.
Right.
Only thing that can stop you from playing if you have turf is lightning.
Yeah.
And so many times that we have just a downpour, I mean, we probably took 2 millions of gallons of water off this field this year.
Well, it's shop vacing it off, sponging it off with couch cushions. It makes it tough, but you know, we get, we make sure that we get it done for these girls to get to play.
And the turf, if we put the turf down, how many inches of water?
Forty thousand, forty thousand gallon of water a minute.
Just on the infield?
On the outfield. Everything on the outfield.
I hope the infield drains good, it's got drains all in it, but it's the outfield that holds so much water.
And I'm sure you probably have some idea what it would cost.
Yeah, we have, actually, we've talked to two different people and we're getting some quotes as we speak. They got a number of the, you know, and obviously we want to do it as most, as cost efficient as possible for the community of Lincoln County and us as coaches that, you know, it's doing the labor. As cost efficient we can do it, we're gonna do it. I mean, for the leg work, the leg work to getting the, the excavation done, the rock rolled in. But we're still looking at a number of margin of around probably $75,000, so...
And we're gonna talk to like Parks and Recreation, we're gonna, we're gonna try, right now, this is big. I mean, everybody's talking softball, so we're gonna, we're gonna go talk to everyone and get what we can. And like I said, it's, it's, we play probably more games than the high school out there this year.
In the state, yes.
And we still had a bunch of...
Thirty-seven, I forgot the number, thirty, thirty-four or whatever.
Thirty-one, four and one. That was the total end up record, so you know, 36 games in a season, tremendously.
That is a, that's a lot of games, but that's how these girls win state championships if you keep them playing. But we will talk to a lot of people and...
Well, we didn't want to get sidetracked, we're gonna focus on the ladies, but it's important.
Yes, and we want to thank you all again. Thank you, Lincoln County Commission.
Any girl wants to make a speech, we're, we'll listen. Somebody, anything they want to say.
Thank you all.
Megan, good luck in the future.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is approve the minutes and I've tried to do some research, I really apologize, I did not pick up and carry through as what was discussed in the meeting about, when the issue came up about the appointment to a member on the Southwest Community Action Council. We had a motion and a second on the floor to appoint Thomas Ramey to that board and there was some side discussion held about, Commissioner Vance said he may, you know, we willing to step up and carry, load some and do some of these assignments and, and I think I mentioned that we want the table that well and all the other stuff, I did never ask for a motion to, beyond that, to call for a vote for those, that motion and second. And I tried to, or I did research and tried to think how to undo that. And I think still there's a motion out there before we approve this, these minutes that needs to be dealt with, that was on the last agenda. We had a little bit of discussion here prior to the meeting and, and I informed both commissioners that we need to deal with this, in my opinion, and it's just my oversight. But with that being said, I still believe that we have a motion there to appoint Mr. Ramey and we've had a discussion that Commissioner Vance still would like to serve on committee and I told him at that juncture, I'd be willing to step down from the, our, one of the committees that I serve on, that being Region Two workforce. And Commissioner Ramey said he'd be willing to, they'd join him on the Route 10 so that there'd be active participation. And so with that said, it's time to call for a vote on the motion and second was on the floor and that was to appoint Thomas Ramey to the board. With Dr. Vance making the motion and I second that. Is there a vote? An all yes? The motion carries. With that, I will also submit that I will step down at the end of the meeting for the Region Two planning development, for the Region Two workforce, so Dr. Vance can be duly appointed at the next meeting.
I'd also like to step down at the end of this meeting from Route 10 coalition and allow Commissioner Vance to take that committee.
And we'll put it on the next agenda.
And also look at some other committees that we talked about, the possibility of infilling in those places.
That'd be a good move on our part. Now for the minutes.
Now, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session of the Lincoln County Commission meeting that was held on May the 19th, 2011 at 10 AM with the adjustments that were made.
Second, the motion is second, been all yes vote, motion carries.
Next thing on the agenda, discussion of concern, Megan Brogan wants to talk to us about the mentor program.
What, you're not coming up here? You can stay at the podium, you can come up here, any for your company.
Can I mention the fellow speakers? I'm kind of nervous. Okay. My name is Megan and this is Adam and this is Maddie and we're from the H20 Regional Program at the high school. And what our program does is it focuses on dropout prevention, so what we do is we mentor the children who are making the transition from middle school into high school. So when they come to the high school, they have a familiar face or some friends at the high school, so it makes it less scary and it makes it less intimidating and...
Makes them more successful.
Yes, and we're trying to ensure that they're more successful in their future. And we're here to ask the Commission if you guys could please match our previously given grant of $1,000 to continue our program that we have because I'll say myself, as a mentor, I would love to see our program get more successful. I would love to see it further and I think what we've started is really something great. We're the only, other than Huntington High School, we're the only high school in West Virginia who has this program. And since it's new, I would love to see it grow and develop so that we can hopefully lower the rates of dropouts in high school.
So you mean for, focus is working to keep kids in school, this and that?
Right. We let them know that there's, there's always someone there for them if they go any, through anything rough, if they have problems at home, if they have problems at school, we're there to talk to them. Everything is confidential unless they say they're gonna hurt themselves or someone else and we talk to them and we comfort them and let them know that there's always someone there to talk to them.
And what would the money be used for?
Money be used for programming. We received a community grant of $1,000 from West Virginia Promise and State Farm through the state. And that was used for programming because every month we try to have a mentee and mentor meeting so that they have, the mentees and the mentors have a safe place to hang out so they get to know each other. They will also work on community, like character education and just team building things. We'll also help with programming for the summer camp, because we have a summer camp in July where the kids from the eighth graders and some of the ninth graders and my mentors will be going to Asbury Woods and the mentors are actually leading the whole camp. They are doing workshops, they're leading everything. I'm just an adult being present.
How many high school kids are in the...
We have 14 mentors and we've got about 10 mentees from Hamilton Middle School.
And you plan to branch out to other schools at the time?
Yes, exactly.
No doubt there's a need.
Yes.
Transition. Okay. You got me convinced. You have a motion to award this $1,000?
So am I.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. All yes, motion carries. Just get with Judy and she'll work on that.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
to have a mentee and mentor meeting, so that they have, the mentees and the mentors have a safe place to hang out, so they get to know each other. They will also work on community, like character education and just team building things. They'll also help with programming for the summer camp, because we have a summer camp in July, where the kids from the eighth graders and some of the ninth graders and my mentors will be going to Asbury Woods, and the mentors are actually leading the whole camp. They are doing workshops, they're leading everything. I'm just an adult being present.
How many high school kids are in the...
We have fourteen mentors, and we've got about ten mentees from Hamlin Middle School.
And you plan to branch out to other schools at the time?
Yes, exactly.
No doubt there's a need.
Yes.
Transition. Okay. You got me convinced, you have a motion to award the thousand dollars?
So moved.
Motion second, all yes, motion carries. Just get Judy in, she'll work on that.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, all, keep up the good work.
Next thing on the agenda is Attorney General Charles Chuck Yeager, maybe to see if we can get an airplane for the school.
One of our citizens in the county called me here a week ago or so and said, have you ever give any thought about maybe having a plane put at the school? And I said, well, no. He said, well, I just thought it might be something inspiring, it might be something for kids to, you know, be historical, be related to, have, see if you can get one of the planes, or one similar that Chuck Yeager flew, and maybe have it mounted over there, and, you know, a marker or whatever put with it. And I said, well, I'll bring it up to the next commission meeting, and basically, what I told him was, with the commission being agreeable, we would bring this to the school board's attention and be willing to work with them, and see if we could figure out some way to do that. So at this juncture, all I, I think would be to request the commission to authorize me to prepare a letter and send it to the school system, and to present this to them, see if they'd like to work with us as a community, if that's something they'd like to have, we'd be willing to work with them.
Second.
The motion second, all yes, motion carries. Homer Cummings is who called, I don't know if I mentioned that or not.
Next thing on the agenda is masterful districts.
Just put that down there for discussion and enlightenment, if there's anything that we need to be working on, aware of, appreciate any insight and direction on that. There is a meeting coming up on the census next week in Huntington, I seen notice for the, I think it's four thirty, Campbell County Commission on June the eighth, about what the senate's doing far as redistricting, and I thought, well, maybe some of us may want to attend that, and see if we can find out what's going on, if there's anything we need to do as a commission, as, if the population is shifting and moving, I suspect maybe, you know, we look at things, it seems like maybe Allen Creek may be growing some, but our county as a whole did not, I don't believe, in figures I've seen, seen any growth, but we will, we'll be looking at that, and see what we need to do, if anything.
Next thing on the agenda is Stephen Comas.
Mr. Comas, welcome.
All right.
Proud grandpa.
Oh, she just liked it.
Oh, God.
You know what else?
I noticed a picture on your desk, but I didn't see any similarity.
Okay, I have, I have three different things I need to deal with with you guys tonight. I've got you all copies, the letter, I hope, and I'll make some more tomorrow. This is, this is yours, signed in blue, you guys get copies.
Thank you, sir.
You know, this is the way it works. This is on Cock Creek, it's a problem been dealing with a long time, it's been a chore. I'll explain it when I get back from the file, because my memory is awful. It is part of an abandoned mobile home that is parked right at the intersection of Lower Buckeye and Cock Creek Road, and, let's see a date here. Okay. Actually, this complaint started, was number eight complaint in two thousand nine. We got pictures, we decided, we made the committee, we sent a letter to the owner, the letter was signed, but never opened, highlighted out whoever signed it. I found it laid on my desk one morning. We finally had, at the time, Darrell Baker, who was a letter control officer and a member of the committee, served papers. His time was up on three thirty, but he called three fifteen of this year and said he would tear it down. Hadn't happened yet, it's enough time. Appreciate you guys addressing the problem.
Taking it from there.
Taking it from there. Just not getting any satisfaction, you know, just because they say they're going to, don't mean they do.
No.
And I think we've been over backwards to give them the benefit of the doubt.
I'll have to review the guidelines, I know it's, we have to give them a notice and...
Yes, yes, well, we give them thirty days.
Right.
And if I'm, I'd have to review too, I think maybe you guys are giving thirty days.
I believe so, yeah, I will, but we'll follow up on that.
Sure. Okay. Let's do this. This, this is in the town of West Hamlin, which we have jurisdiction, we made a committee. And we mailed the letter out on three twenty-one of this year, and no response, not, not, you know, through today, no response. It is a burned, mostly burned, single wide trailer near the foot of West Hamlin Hill, on the right as you're going towards intersection of three and ten, and no response. So, one thing we had, that we can do is...
But you haven't identified the owner?
Yes, yes. Well, I'll get to give you guys one. Put up the letter going, bear with me. I haven't come down from the tournament yet, so, you know.
Getting ready for picking and picking?
I see it's over, yeah, still can't believe. And, I wonder if they've gone here. All right. They, oh, by the way, they did receive, they signed the letter, no response, no calls, no notes, didn't come by. Okay. This one, the last I have, we dealt with it again. We first received a complaint in two thousand seven, it's down on Big Coal River Road, below Allen Creek, and I got my own file. We mailed a letter, we, and we never got any response, there's some controversy who may own the property, we think we know now. It is an abandoned trailer, overgrown vegetation, on the right of the road you go down, it's very obvious, it's an eyesore to the adjoining property. And if this doesn't work, I'm at a loss, I don't, you know, there are times it's taken us a year just to find people that own the property, move outside.
Well, it's definitely not an easy chore, but it's important if we try to enforce this...
Sure.
Orders.
And we had to jump through the books, and it just takes a long time, time. For example, one guy that we dealt with, his address is in the sheriff's office in San Francisco, California, but he moved and left no forwarding address. I happened to be in there one day, and Jerry Weaver saw a big guy on the phone from California, and I heard him say a name. It was him, and he's coming back to take care of the property, over right across from Bob's Market, but anyway, that's all I got, and appreciate your help. Oh, I would like to say that I'm having some trouble getting members to show up. Still haven't resolved the situation where Darrell has left the sheriff's office as a letter control officer. And I do know that state code says, I forgot to bring it with me, that if the commission deserves to hire, or the county deserves to hire a letter control officer, he will sit on this committee with us. But the last meeting was just me and Charles Kent Moss, and he's always there.
He's good for that, for sure.
And, and, but he couldn't be the month before, we had no meetings the month before, nobody could be there.
But there is a, certain people, certain categories.
Yes, county health officer, representative of the sheriff's office, sheriff serves as ex officio for a committee, two members of the public at large, a county fire chief, a member of the planning commission, that's about all I can remember.
Well, then, what we need to do as a commission, try to help you get some people to work with, is what we do.
Seven dash one dash three F F, state code. For sure.
At this point, I think that asks for a motion from the commission to, to accept these three letters, these three requests from Mr. Comas, and for us to pursue our obligation to make this, see if we can make this happen, to get these devapidated buildings and issues correct. So, the motion second, being all yes, we will see if we can help out any. Thank you, Mr. Comas.
Okay, thank you.
Next thing on the agenda is old business. Have written it down with the A R R A Green Waste Water Project Phase Three.
Right, this is not A R R A.
It's not?
No.
What is it?
It's just Green Waste Water Project Phase Three.
E E E.
We're not getting any, we're not getting stimulus. I've got four different activities I want to give you updates on, including the green stimulus. One, first one is Camp Lakeview, and I just wanted to let you know some of the things we've got going on currently, and will have going on during the summer. This is the camp on the left side of the Mud River Lake, that we're trying to create a residential camp there, and we're moving forward slowly with it. One of the things we've been doing that I think's been working pretty well is end of the year programs for elementary school kids, where we bring them in and partner with other groups to do nature awareness, nutrition, and then get them out of the lake to do canoeing, kayaking, and swimming, and we have two, we were able to do two of those this year, we got rained out for one of them. Talked to the incoming superintendent of schools about trying to give some facilities in the fall, so maybe we'll have that go on. We also are going to move forward with free Wednesdays for kids, and we'll have five Wednesdays during the summer, where we will offer light lunch, canoeing, kayaking, supervision, work with Tri River to bus the kids in and out during those Wednesdays. We'll have a family Sunday, and then we'll have our second annual kayak races. We'll see how those go. I think we're going to be all right funding these things with different funding streams, but if we run into a problem for hamlet and jail, field sandwiches, we'll come to the commission for that. The next thing is the Lincoln County Health Initiative. Remember, we had a summit last November, and agreed at that to have a follow-up, we had a follow-up in May. We didn't have a very big crowd that came out, but they were an enthusiastic group who had been working. You've got a two-page thing there, the major accomplishments from that. Couple of things that, that I wanted to share with you that are on there, one of the things is the county health department is establishing a church nursing program, where they're going to train nurses from different churches in the county on how to do blood pressure, how to check for blood sugar, they got a grant from Bayer Corporation to get some glucose monitoring kits, and they're about ready to kick that off the ground. There's been a lot of talk from a lot of different people about the drug epidemic that we've got going on in the county. One of the thoughts was we should try to get more N A and A A sites where people could come for meetings. At this point, there are four different locations in the county where we've either got these going on, or we're working toward them. It seems like the biggest problem we've got at this point is how to make these sites anonymous. It seems like in big cities, you know, where people are coming and going all the time, it's pretty easy to slip into a meeting and not have everybody who lives in the local community to know who it is. That seems to be a deterrent. The site in McCorville started out real well, but they've been losing people, it probably has to do with not being able to be anonymous. We also talked at the prevention, the youth and prevention coalition about the need to get something like this at the high school level for high school students, but again, we're running into problems about how to make it anonymous, you know, if we said, okay, all the teens come to the A A meeting, well, everybody and their uncle's going to know who's doing it, so we're sort of stymied by that. Commissioner McCann was there at the meeting and talked about the initiatives that the county commission has been doing to promote smoking cessation, and walking with employees, and the subscriptions to the Lincoln Wealth Center, try to get folks to do more activities there. I already talked about Camp Lakeview and the stuff there sponsoring. We also talked about the pregnancy problem in the county, although there's a lot of discussion, we don't have any specific programs initiated yet. A couple months ago, David Roberts was introduced to the commission as the new extension employee, he's doing family health programs. I think tonight he's kicking off the dimes with diabetes program here in Hamlin. His idea is to travel around the county and to do those programs around the county, he's got a couple other programs that he's trying to do. When the health department starts their two hundred and twelve program, they've committed to doing twice a month outreach to community centers on health issues, so I think we might see some good kind of things there. Probably, I think one of the most successful is, the last thing down here, is this Center Point Church Weight Loss Program that Jason Cook did. He challenged parishioners at his church to come together and lose weight. He had eighteen people who signed up, and the eighteen people lost a total of three hundred and one pounds, and the most lost by an individual was forty-seven pounds. We thought it'd be great, maybe the local newspaper might do a feature on this, and see if we could get some other church groups to also do similar kind of programs. One of the things Jason talked about was tying in the idea of physical health and spiritual health together, and he thought that worked really well, this conversation. We're probably going to come together in a couple more months, bring people together to talk about this again, see if we've got some more ideas. You've got a flyer in there for Y O C Camp, which is our low income kids camp, it's coming up in August. We're recruiting campers at this point, we're recruiting counselors, our counselors are high school students, we'll probably try to get some Reach One, each, each one Reach One students, or, we've lost all those folks, but we'll try to, try to get some of those. That group is actually going to be out at Camp Lakeview using the facility, so hopefully we can get some counselors for that. And the last is the Green Waste Water Update. We were plagued with all the rain that we had earlier this spring, and had to keep postponing, putting our initial installations in. You remember, because Wiseman Associates, who got the bid, hadn't had any experience putting in Board Nomonas systems, they had to go through onsite training. So that finally happened in May, Board Nomonas was there, Infiltrator was there, Infiltrator makes the tanks, and the transducer system which regulate, which tells you the level of the liquid in the tanks. They oversaw Wiseman and felt they did a fine job, so they signed off on that, so now Wiseman's working on their own. On the twenty-sixth of May, Ryan Harbison was our district sanitarian, approved the first four systems that they would put in, he'll approve the next round of systems the tenth of June. He'll approve the next round of systems the 10th of June. The other thing that's happening as we're doing this, and that's on the second page of your update, the community maintenance organization has gotten their 501(c)(3). They've elected officers who will serve until November, which is when their annual meeting is, and we're in the process of putting out bids to hire a maintenance provider who would be the person who would ensure that these systems were well taken care of. The feeling was, and I think they probably made the right decision, that that whole process all should be done by the maintenance organization rather than having the county commission do it.
May I agree?
Two separate kinds of things. So, we will, as soon as I get the legal ad to the journal, which I hope will be tomorrow, we'll run advertisements of the 7th and the 14th. This is another one of those things we've never done before. So, we're, we're gonna have an informal meeting where we're gonna invite maintenance providers to come to the informal meeting, and we're gonna share with them what we've developed for the bid process itself and ask for their feedback. And then we will finalize the bid, we'll have a required pre-bid and site visitation that will take them around, look at the sites, and then have bids close the 1st of July. And hopefully have everything ready to go in mid-July and report it first of all. So, I'm real hopeful.
That's a big step.
It will be a very big step. It will be a very big step. Once they've got their bank accounts set up, we've still got that, some extra money from the very first thing we did, which was the E D A project, that's still on a bank account that's a commission bank account. We've come to you all and asked for that final amount of money to be transferred into the bank account from the maintenance organization, and that will be a lot of how it'll be able to match, so the co-pay kind of idea for the community story.
How much was it?
We have a little over $80,000 left, which is both some of the money that COPA gave us and some of the money that community people put in, some of the people put in some money for the system. So, I'm not sure how many years that's gonna take us to, but the maintenance organization has talked about inferring sources. One idea is it works, and it's not a, you know, already there and it's gonna just make them, we might go to the district section over there and see if they'd like to get over once we should sell water there, so there's more, but since they're gonna be trying to be a real natural. And the last thing you've got is the second drawdown invoice, whatever you wanna call it, request that we sent to the D E P. This is a pretty large one, it's $213,000. They're allowing us, because the state is shutting down, I think it's next week until the middle of July, they're not gonna be issuing any checks, they allow, they allowed us to estimate how much money we like, we might need to carry us forward, which is pretty nice. They hadn't done that for us to do. So, we're requesting some additional funds, additional awards spent to try and, to see where. So, we're hopeful, I think maybe by late August or September, we may have all of these systems up. This guy's been pretty fast.
Well, you know, I'm sure the other commission, everybody appreciates the extra effort that you put forth to make these kind of things happen, keep them going. It's, it would've been a, a good journey, been through a lot of tough spots, but really...
There has been some tough spots.
But when you get to this point, you look back and think, well, it was worth, you know, doing this or doing that to make it happen. We know, sitting here, that it would not have happened if you had stepped up and made it work.
Thank you.
We appreciate it so much.
There's a lot of places at this state, your expertise there. Well, I, I, one of the things I think we're finding is that D E P and D H H R are, both of those organizations are looking to this project to give them ideas about changes in the law and changes in how you inspect things and what kind of problems we've uncovered. I think it scares them a little bit, but I...
Well, and it's, and the critical thing is, is having the right guidelines, but same time, people being able to afford it.
Yes.
And then to maintain.
Well, I, we still haven't, we still haven't figured out the affordability problem. I don't know how we're gonna...
It has to be part of the mindset of the health department people's, when they write the guidelines, how can they make this thing work? No, you should hold it on paper, or it doesn't work.
Well, the hope is, if we go to phase four, that we would build into phase four some experimental systems that hadn't been approved, that are less expensive, with the promise by the technology people that they would guarantee in five years and convince the state to allow us to do it.
And us monitoring water quality, that would be good.
So, I'll come back to you with more ideas.
All right.
Okay.
Don't retire.
Missed that. I'm, I'm, don't retire.
You know, in a year or two, you'll be old enough.
No, I'm old enough.
Next thing on the agenda is the Harts Center, Community Center and the McCorville Community Center. Dorsey, have you anything to...
I don't know. We had a meeting a couple weeks ago with Sharon, and said the volunteer progress went really well. So, Scott has decided that now we will only have one meeting a month, and that will be the first party. They'll be open to the public, and of course, everybody's welcome, and through the commission. So, it's Monday, we'll have our public meeting, and at 6:00, so you're welcome to come.
Thank you for helping out and all that. On the Harts, I know we have been talking for a while, and I think we've got all the pieces in place to have the deputy to move in the trailer up to the Harts Center, so I think that's gonna happen here in the next few days. That needs to be, and I'm just glad we finally got it, brought it out. It seemed like one of the things we were in a hurry to do about five months ago, and now we're thinking, well, it's finally gonna happen, so I was told that it's ready to happen, so I talked to one of the board members today, and I think everything is set to make it happen up there, so that'd be good. I don't know if anybody else has got anything else to add or not. They are still having their meetings out there on Wednesday for tax collection and those things, so everything seems to be working. We did do a lot of roof repair, but when I was talking to that board member today, he said that was all good, but now we need to work on the air conditioning, if this pop away, so we'll see what we can do today.
Does anybody else have anything to...
I have a couple of different things, but I'll just put that in my report.
Okay. We've already taken care of the Southwest, we've finished the board. Commissioners, I scheduled the road closure hearing in Allen Creek, but I didn't put it on the agenda. Notices were sent out, published in the paper.
Yeah, I kept thinking about that.
So, and I know the people are back here. Is there any opposition here? I haven't received any. I did, I do know for a fact that notices were sent out and I published it in the paper.
And we sent the hearing.
Yes, so, I mean, you know, we can, I guess, wait till the 19th, but let them know that everything's going as...
I know, the two other parties members joined it, I bought a talk to them. They didn't even, they asked me if they had time. They got the letter to send to us.
Right.
And I said, well, unless you have an objection, I said, you won't be going, so didn't want them to go.
I'll put it on, I will put it on the agenda on June the 19th, I guess if that's their desire to close it, but we haven't received any objections.
Thank you all.
Next thing on the agenda is new business. I need a motion to approve the bills as submitted for payment.
So moved. Motion second, been all yes? Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the exoneration orders as submitted by Tracy Dempsey Assessor.
Second. All yes vote, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the community participation grant program application for the Big Ugly Community Center renovations and supplies an amount of $6,000 and get Charles S. McCamper's an authorization to sign those stated documents.
So moved. Second. Motion second, been all yes? Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the budget revision to be submitted to the state office's office to clear out the physical here. And you all do not have a copy in there, because it hasn't been completed, but I have to send it up there before the 15th, that's the last one, and if you all can give Mr. McCann authorization to sign that, and then I'll give you a copy after it's completed. But I know there's gonna be several things. We will try and wait till after all the bills were paid on this time to just, to see, revise the budget to see how we need it to make the adjustments.
It's your motion. So moved.
I'll say my thing.
Motion second.
Are we looking at, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. All yes vote.
Are we looking at changes to the amount we're taking out of coal severance or something like that, or several different...
It won't be much, I don't think, it'll just be some...
Now, that, we will make those budget revisions in July.
Yes, this case we ran to something, what, we don't, somebody bought something and can't pay for, or...
One, I will tell you one thing, the elections, we thought we would get the reimbursement back from the state. We're not gonna get the reimbursement back from the state, so in the election council, we are over expended because of this special election, and we're gonna have to do some adjustments there. I do know that for a fact.
Then, once we get that back though, we just put it back in...
It'll go back into general council.
Okay.
And I have asked Judy today to send a letter to all elected officials. Remember back in the last, in the budget in March, that one of the last things we did was give each elected official office $5,000 to provide pay increases or however they decide to use that in a way of increment pays for people. And we basically, we'll have to approve that at some juncture here in July. We felt we need to notify them, tell them they need to change their budget and be ready to do that, that can't exceed the $5,000. They don't have to spend the whole $5,000.
I need a motion to approve the drawdown request of a reward of an amount of $10,000 for the Lincoln County Opportunity Company from the Governor's Community Participation Grant Program and the certification of the grant completion and give Charles S. McCamper President authorization to sign those stated documents.
Second. Motion second, been all yes? Motion carries.
Plus a far.
Computer and software. I need a motion to approve the contract buy-in between the West Virginia Development Office and the Lincoln County Commission for the Lincoln County Courthouse H V A C repairs and give Charles S. McCamper President authorization to sign those stated documents.
So moved. Second. Motion second, all yes? Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the contract buy-in between the West Virginia Development Office and the Lincoln County Commission for the Francis Creek and Colms Road Water Line Extension and give Charles McCamper President authorization to sign those stated documents.
Second. Motion second, all yes? Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve appointments down in vacation of Lincoln County Commission by Donald C. Lewis Clark as files. Roger Dell Sowers as executor of the estate of Pearl Dogs and Sowers. Herbert Spalding as executor of the estate of Leonard Louis Adkins. Ralph Smith Jr. as executor of the estate of Ralph Smith Singer. Catherine Ross as executors of the estate of Robert Lee Hutchison. Brenda Baker as administrators of the estate of Rodney Baker. Crystal Clay as administrators of the estate of Nonnie Lee Hamble. Geraldine Gimses as administrators of the estate of Roy Hall Dempsey. Marcella Lempel as administrators of the estate of Gary Gilmore.
So moved. Second. Motion second, all yes? Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve an inter-office budget revision in the office of the Assessor transferring $550 from travel to materials and supplies.
Second. Motion second, all yes? Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the contract buy-in between the West Virginia Development Office and Lincoln County Commission for the Big Ugly Water Line Extension and give Charles S. McCamper President authorization to sign those stated documents.
So moved. Second. Motion second, all yes? Motion carries. Those two water projects is, I guess, direct thank yous to our former governor, Manchin, who helped Jeff Elders secure the money to get those, let this happen. Appreciate it.
I need a motion to approve the community participation grant program application for the Lincoln County Parks and Recreation Harts Center Fitness and Trails in the amount of $6,000 and give Charles S. McCamper President authorization to sign those stated documents.
Second. The motion second, all yes? Motion carries. Let me just pause while we've still got one of our coaches here. I was gonna mention earlier, I talked to Alan Holder, and I forgot. Basically, he says that they would be able and willing to provide signage, to go to high school, under路, whatever, but he and I talked, we thought maybe, you know, the school and the girls figure out where they want it and all that, and get with us, and then we can have some signs.
Thank you. That's all right. I need a motion to approve the community participation grant program application for the Lincoln County Opportunity Company incorporating an amount of $25,000 and give Charles S. McCamper President authorization to sign those stated documents.
So moved. Second. Motion second, all yes? Motion carries.
I need a motion to set a hearing date of June the 16th, 2011, at 10:00 a.m. on the estate of June Farmer, the petition to remove the executive.
So moved. Second. Motion second, all yes? Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve an inter-office budget revision for the office of the Sheriff Law Enforcement transferring $800 from materials and supplies to Sheriff Travel.
So moved. Second. Motion second, all yes? Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the appointment of Kristy Strags to the Board of Health.
So moved. Second. The motion second, all yes? Motion carries.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that's not on the agenda, but I'd like to speak at this time?
We're working our outreach for like, the state community commission and the state.
We appreciate you guys.
Have you gotten another one yet?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
I just want, I say it's on your agenda, but I wanted to bring it up anyway, the Lincoln E D A's having the bacon egg and business Tuesday morning. I went around Allen Creek and invited all the business people, and it looks like we're gonna have a good turnout. Josh Dowers, Rick Bettrub, they're gonna come to us, and I went around and hit everybody.
Be sure to invite the Lincoln jury.
I think I sent you an email. The ones I had emailed to, I emailed invitation, and I also went around and talked to people. I just want to get a good thing. One thing I, the people say, and I've learned a long time ago, if you listen to the people, they'll tell you what they want, and most of the businesses is, they want sewer, they want sewer, and I tell them that, I'm also on the P S D board, and I told them we've got an engineer going preliminary on sewage now, they're very excited about that, so...
Looking promising.
Mm-hmm, it does. It looks very good. So far, it looks like South Charleston wants us. They, they will. So hopefully they'll run sewer to the county line, and then let us hook it up from there and get sewer in Allen Creek. It's like everything else, it's gonna be money thing.
Yeah, that's, be a good thing.
But I'd like to invite all of you all.
Okay. Eight, eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock, you get free breakfast.
Jim Rides Rich.
Jim Rides Rich, and Jim's gonna be there too. I asked Jim, I said, I want you...
He can't get up better, can he?
I asked him, I said, I want you to be here as a business owner, not as a cook. He said, do it.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? I'll be a mouthful if you can attack, or if anybody wants to buy t-shirts.
I'll take a large.
Okay, well, we've already talked about the bacon egg and business, thanks to Gary. So, who wants to come with the resolution?
If I don't have right front, I think you got it. We were requested by the faces group, which basically is coal support group, to adopt a resolution in support of coal, and I'll just read through that quickly. Basically, it's a resolution to, at grassroots, county commission, other government agencies to let the support be known, if it is known, to other people higher up in the, not only the, I guess, congress and whatever, but anyone that, that maybe is looking at investing in coal from economics, whatever, so... Being known, the Lincoln County Commission is a strong supporter of coal mines in West Virginia and throughout Appalachia, and calls upon our congress and president to support jobs and economic opportunities in coal communities across our region. And whereas the links between coal production, economic growth, prosperity, and energy security are unbreakable, and whereas coal is a main source of energy throughout the world, provides access electricity used in the United States and... used in the United States, and has much as ninety-eight percent of electricity generated in the region, and whereas coal mining is responsible for more than ninety thousand jobs in West Virginia alone, provides coal mining jobs that pay one hundred percent higher wages than the average wage in the state, and generates nearly fifteen billion in economic output in the state, and whereas coal mining in West Virginia is balancing the economic needs and environmental expectations of its citizens, and whereas coal mining plans are being restored as part of the reclamation process to meet ongoing economic recreation, education, transportation, and housing needs of local communities and the state, and whereas the ongoing backlog in permit approvals, the lack of transparency in the federal permitting process, and ongoing court challenges to permit applications are jeopardizing jobs, economic opportunity, and coal production throughout West Virginia and the region. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the Lincoln County Commission calls upon the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, the President's Council on Environmental Quality, the West Virginia Congressional Delegation, and other congressional delegations in the region, and state and local government officials to support coal production and the jobs, economic growth, and the energy security provided by coal mining, by fixing a regulatory system that is frustrating these vital objectives. That is the resolution that's been requested, and our support, and I certainly support that as a commissioner, and would ask my fellow commissioners to join me in that support.
A motion, Doc.
Second. The motion and second. You're right, Doc. Thank you.
Okay, you want to give your reports now?
Get some, the first on the list.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, on Saturday the twenty-first, I met with Ernest Ambergy and Terry Brumfield and Assessor Tracy Gimsy to discuss the curve, which is across from the new school being built at Hartz, as part of the Route Ten Coalition Group, that's a discussion point we've had lately, is the need for that curve to be moved so that it's a safer area for the buses and the parents and the traffic that will go in and out of the school, and Mr. Ambergy has been active in the Logan Lincoln area for quite a while with building of new schools, athletic complexes, and has a good relationship with the school building authority, so he had called and asked that we have a meeting, and, uh, I guess the conclusion of the meeting was that we continue to agree the curve needs to be moved, and we're going to pursue the school building authority and, uh, the governor to see if there's anything we can do at the local level to make that become a reality. The, uh, governor has indicated that money's available, but there's some confusion with certain people within the state road, whether or not that's been communicated to the state road, so we're going to try to get everybody on the same page. That evening, that whole day after that meeting, I spent at the Hartz Community Center, meeting with board members and business owners that rent space, and, uh, what I thought would be about an hour visit ended up being several, and I ended up staying for the community auction that evening and speaking to the, the auctioneer, and, um, listening to their concerns about what we could do as a community center and commission to make the auction more successful, and then last year we had auctions in the community, and we had one, one hundred and fifty or so people that would show up, and at the auction I attended, we may have had thirty people, so we're going to try to do some outreach to get people to take advantage of the auction. For two days, I was able to go to Vienna and watch the girl softball team, I'm not going to repeat any of what we've already said, but, uh, that's the highlight of what I've been able to do over the last few weeks. I met with Gil McClanahan, who is a reporter with Channel Thirteen, he had called to interview me in regards to, uh, the possibility of placing solar panels here at the courthouse to offset some of the utility costs, and, uh, after being interviewed by him, he was able to provide me some information about Hurricane, and contact information with the mayor of Hurricane and their city manager, and also some companies that are partnering with government agencies to bring solar panels to, uh, government buildings, and I'm still pursuing that so that I can bring it back to the commission, we can look at feasibility of, uh, upfront, there's going to be a lot of costs, so we're going to have to have a cost analysis to make sure that if we invest, over time, it would pay for itself. On May the thirty-first, I contacted each of the schools across Lincoln County that participated in the, the tab drive for us to collect pop tabs, the winning school was West Hamlin, but the schools that did participate, we decided to allow those schools also to have at least a pizza party, and, uh, one of the things that was decided was that, instead of just sending a check to the individual schools and the schools placing orders, which sometimes for the outlined schools might be an order to a business in neighboring counties, not that we don't support all business, but we'd like to see the tax dollars go to county businesses, so we contacted, or I contacted the local businesses that would be providing the pizza for the different schools, and let them know that the commission would pay for those pizzas directly, so that we kept the money in the business within Lincoln County. On June the first, I attended the Alpha Natural Resources press conference on Quarter G, where they have taken over Massey's operations, and, uh, was able to attend the president of the commission here, and several other commissioners, delegates, and senators from southern West Virginia, and I wanted to just quickly give you a couple of points, and I'll give this to the Lincoln Journal so that they can report to the public, but, just to give you an idea of the far-reaching impact of Alpha Natural Resources, they employ six thousand seven hundred and forty-eight people, they have a total wages and benefits that's right at six hundred billion dollars, and just the outreach that they have within this community, the neighboring counties is immense, and, uh, I have to say that Kevin Crutchfield, who was their chief executive officer, I was able to listen to his interview, and also the governors after the press conference, and, you know, I, over the years, we've all witnessed, and we all know Massey Cole, and former CEO Don Lincolnship, and a lot of times the way he handled questions and, uh, just the perception he gave to the position he was in, a lot of times wasn't very positive, and, to me personally, and I'm not speaking on behalf of the commission, I just felt like many times it was arrogance and he bulldozed over people, but I felt like Mr. Crutchfield, he was asked some pointed questions about, how are you going to handle the, uh, the environmentalists, people that don't agree with you, and I thought his answers were very respectful, and I thought that, and I still believe, he, uh, will bring a, uh, a fresh air, if you will, to the approach from that company, and, uh, something I think that Massey and their employees greatly deserve, and I'm not saying that as just an outside of the Massey, my brother works for Massey, and I'd like to see, I guess, Alpha Resources now, and I'd like to see them represented well, and I think that Alpha will, with his leadership, be able to do If you had visited the commission office over the last few weeks, you were able to see a large number of boxes piled up in the corner of pop tabs, and we started having ants and other insects, which Judy was beginning to be a little annoyed by, so that evening, commission president and myself took the, uh, pop tabs down to the Ronald McDonald House, and, uh, where we were given a tour of the facility by Margaret Wilson, who's their executive director, and, uh, through a conversation with her, we learned that she is related to Geraldine Payton, who's in the county clerk's office, so, the, uh, being able to be at that facility and see the services they provide, from free room, food, kitchenettes, computer lab, washing clothes, it makes the drive to continue to collect those tabs even more important, and I know some of the schools have already started that for next year. Um, today, I was able to attend the dedication, it's already been open for a while, but the Little General at Hartz, which has a Subway and Godfather's Pizza, that had a ribbon cutting, and I decided to bring this, just to show, this was my little piece of the ribbon, and when I see this, I don't think of just ribbon, I see this as a piece of progress, I think that anytime we can have new businesses locate, open up in Lincoln County and provide jobs, and this location provides thirty-six jobs for our small community, I think it's important, and, uh, just glad to be a part of it, and that, and I just would like to again note that I will be presiding from the Route Ten Coalition at the end of this meeting, that's all I have.
Well, I guess I'm next, though. Um, I think as all the other commissioners that we attended the candidates the day after we had, I think, at our last meeting, um, I've also had several meetings with Mr. Ambergy that Thomas talked about concerning the curve at Hartz, uh, you know, it's been a problem there even before the school was built, because it was, it, the bank they put there also has problems with people going in and out there, and people didn't have visibility going up into that area, so, I'd also talked to Mr. Brumfield concerning that, and I know he owns some property around there, is interested in making it into a safer place, and I, I, I concur, something's going to have to be done there, and I'm, I'm glad, uh, the work Thomas has done on, on, on the area there, and hope that I get on the Route Ten Coalition, I can help from my end of it. Um, the Alpha merger with Massey, uh, was something that I was following very closely, as I do occupational medicine for coal miners, I do black mud evaluations, as well as I have a son-in-law who's an electrician who works for Alpha now, and, uh, I could tell you, from talking to the people that were working, they were, they were scared about the merger, uh, initially, but once Alpha's people started talking with them, concerning their running right program, uh, they feel a lot more comfortable, I think, uh, and we'll see if that, uh, carries on to, as, as Alpha has before, if, uh, they maintain a safe workplace for, for these miners, uh, these people go through a heck of a lot every day getting up and going to work, and anything that I think that these people will do, the companies can do to help them make a safer place for them to work, they need to do that. I would like to mention, a friend of mine passed away from Hartz, his name's Jerry Richards, he was the owner of Business and Hartz, and, and he worked very hard for the people of Hartz, and trying to do what was right for those people, he was a visionary, he had several ideas concerning how we could use Hattie McPoy in developing businesses, and he was willing to invest his own money in those businesses and work hard to help the community up there, and I think, uh, the other commissioners knew him as well, and I think they'll agree that, uh, he's going to be sorely missed there, and, uh, he was a good person, and he was a good citizen for, you know.
Okay, yeah, I agree with you, one hundred percent. Yeah, we did on May the twentieth, since the last meeting, we did meet in the, uh, across the street and conduct our canvass of the special, May fourteenth election. On the girls' tournament, May twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, yes, I did attend the, uh, tournament in Vienna, of course, I was one of these people that had a, a double agenda, I wanted to be there for the girls, but, uh, and see them do well and win, but also, uh, I got an eighth grade girl granddaughter, or a ninth grade granddaughter, and I took them along, trying to inspire them a little bit, and, uh, they had a good time, one of them does play softball, so, uh, I might have had, uh, two agendas on that, but it was a good trip. On May the twenty-seventh, uh, as chairman of Region Two Planning Development, I did meet with Michael Webb to finalize our budget for the federal EDA grant and sign those documents. May thirty-first, uh, I made a trip to Huntington Walmart to purchase all the prizes, and thanks for our kids' fishing tournament this Saturday, uh, what we try to do is provide the kids a meal, uh, we give them, uh, tickets for prizes to be drawn out, we try to have at least forty, fifty prizes to be given out, and, uh, also gift certificates for the, uh, business here in county, in the county mason sporting over at West Hamlin. Also, uh, we provide t-shirts for the, uh, kids that participate, once we see who comes, and we get their size, and then we mail them their shirt, uh, basically, what we try to do as a commission is to get the message out, we want kids to be active, but get hooked on fishing, not on drugs, as our little ads say, but we have that organized and ready to go, uh, around thirty, Saturday morning, and, uh, we have, uh, plenty of help coming from the crime watch people, and we have some of those people here, shows up and helps, and, uh, and the bass club, and, uh, anyone from the commission that wants to help, usually I'm there, Judy's there, uh, her better half's usually there too, Mr. Hillbillet, so, uh, we have a good time, and the kids have a super time. Also, uh, I did join, uh, Mr. Ramy and other commissioners from Canoa, Boone County, uh, yesterday at the Alpha Natural Resource Day, uh, Thomas had mentioned about the, all the employment, and saying that they have a hundred and fifty mines, forty coal preparation facilities in Appalachia and the Powder River Basin, so it's a big operation, the thing that, uh, I thought was important is that the metallurgical coal that they have, and all of the, uh, tonnage they have bought up for future development, uh, is going to be a very important part of jobs and economic development, and also, uh, mentioned to Thomas as we drove in, you turn off Quarter G, and it's, uh, Morgan Massey Drive, and I thought, well, I mentioned to Thomas, I said, well, they'll probably change that now, and we get in there, and one of the last things that the, the governor did was have a, uh, a sign there that said, well, we need to present this now, and so it, it reads, "Running Right Way," so, uh, they're going to run this company the right way, that's the message. Later that same day, we did go on to Huntington and, uh, with the four hundred plus pounds of aluminum tabs, and, uh, got those presented to the executive director down there, and, and very happy, and what, I had been there once before, four or five years ago, briefly toured it, as working really as a representative of Region Two Planning Development, the lady that runs Region Two is on that board, and, so she was, took us out one day for that, but, I guess I'd missed it in the other time, but, it is such a service to people for a long time, I guess I thought it was short period of time, but there's people that, uh, stay there with their families with illnesses for over a year, two years, three years sometimes, and I just, it never clicked on me till, she pointed out certain, you know, they have dorm rooms, basically hotel-type rooms, and this room here has been occupied by this same family three years, uh, they may have a two-month break and come back and get more health treatments and whatever, but, uh, if you're ever there, it's located just back of Cavill Huntington Hospital, about three blocks, but it's a very nice facility, and it's, it's worth a little tour and find out what they do, and, and I'm sure that, uh, any help that you can do down through time, just dropping in some money at the McDonald's, a little cash or whatever would help, because they operate on, uh, purely on grants and, and donations, they do not get money from the McDonald outfit, it's, it's, and basically a service that uses Ronald McDonald, but McDonald's does promote that. The other thing, I did attend the Little Giant, the Little General at Gray Smith's today, and, uh, uh, the fun part of it was that they got a gas war going on out there, you can get, uh, regular gas for three sixty-nine, uh, and diesel, what I drive is three ninety-nine, here's three, four fifteen, so, uh, with the infusion of that new operation there, it's just amazing to walk in and, uh, see the business, uh, from the Godfather's Pizza to Subway, to the, you know, the gasoline, and all the other things they sell, but, uh, a lot of people employed, a lot of people seem to be, uh, very happy, I did speak to the guy that, uh, is over the, uh, the whole Little General program, and, and he basically said he had a hundred operations like this throughout, basically southern West Virginia, but, uh, which is, is good that, uh, that he settled in here, and of course, he also said that, uh, just in talking to, I won't mention the company, but a company in Lincoln County that, uh, has built and maintains a lot of his facilities, he said they had been good workers, and they've done good work, and, uh, he was just happy doing business with them, so, it was, it was good, uh, if we were able to go out, but, that concludes my...
Anything else? You don't have stuff?
On the, uh, note for... On the note for, another item is, on the Route Ten Coalition, there has been some good happening down through time, and at West Hamlin right now, if you drive over, they're doing the turn lane now, they're taking out, making it wider so that you're going to have a turn lane all the way down through there, which will help businesses and also be a safer thing. So I think that it's good that we've been involved for three and a half years, so with the Route Ten, we can, are going to continue to be involved in it, and just good that we be able to, you know, have all the Commissioners involved and try to make this thing happen, not just Lincoln County, but that's our focus, but we actually work with Cavill and Logan County, trying to come up with ways to make Route Ten safer. So with that, I do, don't want to forget, that I do hereby resign my place on the board for Region Two Workforce Development, so that we don't have more opportunities for other Commissioners to. That's all I have. All right, we're ready for a motion to resign? I'm trying to think, Thomas, his resignation, Ben. Okay, then we will adjourn. Motion to adjourn.